Good evening, everybody. Welcome to September, and I missed everybody. I hope everyone had a really, really good summer and enjoyed themselves. As we'll see, there's a lot going on in the summer that we'll talk about later and such, but I hope everyone had a nice relaxing time with friends and family and are energized and had a good drop off in everything for their kids who are going back to school this week. So with that, I want to ask our Madam Clerk to read the adequate notice of compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the day and return it thereafter.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
President.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Calmenson.
Here.
Mr. Pulaski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
Council President McTurnan.
President. All right. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Jim Bennett to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channels 3, 4, and 36, and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV, on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to thecityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the regular enclosed-session minutes of July 29th, 2025?
So moved.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're on to our historical minute. Councilman Pulaski, do we have one this evening?
Did you want to report?
Oh, do we have reports?
Would you?
Oh, I thought I skipped over that.
Mayor's report.
Yes, I wrote the reports for the, for our minute approval, sorry. All right, reports. So, Mayor, sorry, I have a report too, so I'm flipping myself.
I'm trying not to take it personally. You missed me that much, did you? Good evening, everybody. Welcome back, Summit students. I hope that the first few days of the new school year have gone well, and as you walk and bike to school, I want to remind you to stay safe, be aware of your surroundings, look up from your phone when you're crossing the street, and use crosswalks where our crossing guards are stationed. Let's make this school year both enjoyable and safe for everyone. Speaking of safety, on Tuesday, October 1st, at 7:00 p.m., our Summit Police Officer David Cotigo will be hosting a Facebook Live with a guest expert on motorized bikes and scooters. This will be a great opportunity for parents to learn about best practices for owning and safely operating these devices. If your child has an e-bike or e-scooter, or if you're considering purchasing one, I encourage you to join us. Viewers will be able to submit questions in advance and during the live event in the comment section. I would also like to recognize Detective Sergeant Rudy Garita and Detective Darren Sliker for their heroic actions in Newark last Friday. While investigating a stolen vehicle, they rescued a toddler from a burning building. Their bravery and quick response exemplify the very best of the Summit Police Department. WABC News interviewed them about the incident, so please tune in tonight to hear the full story. We'll also be doing an official recognition of their actions in the coming weeks. The Summit Police Department has learned that approximately 15 residents recently received fraudulent toll violation notices. These notices list vehicles registered to Summit addresses but under different names. If you have a notice, if you receive a notice like this, do not discard it. Please contact the Summit Police Department right away. Thank you for remaining vigilant and helping keep Summit safe. Thank you.
Good reporting. Glad I didn't skip it. Thank you. All right. We have a city administrator report. Ms. Baldwin, please.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Spare with me a moment. As of yesterday, September 2nd, we are back to regular hours at City Hall, which is Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. There's also a modified recycling collection schedule this week due to Labor Day. All recycling collections are delayed by one day, but the trash collection is not affected by the holiday. The Summit Free Market will be held this month on Saturday, September 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and on Friday, September 26th, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the transfer station. Summit residents with a parking disposal permit can attend and browse donated items, take what they want for free. Donation guidelines are available at cityofsummit.org/free market. September is National Preparedness Month, and we would like to encourage residents and businesses to make disaster preparation a priority this month. Making a plan to prepare for disasters is the best way to protect your family. Creating a family plan and building an emergency kit are two great ways to start. Please visit cityofsummit.org/p預備 to get more information on how best to prepare for disasters and emergencies. And that completes my report.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. I have a few things to say from my report today. We had a busy summer. You know, I know there's a view that not much goes on in the summer, everybody's away, but that is not true. There is a lot that goes on in the summer. It doesn't stop. I will kind of focus on two things. One, a lot of my reports over the last several months have focused on our Round Three and Round Four Mount Laurel obligations. If you've been keeping score, the challenge period for our Round Four plan, which we submitted on June 30th, closed on August 31st. We have had three challenges to our plan, two by developers, one of which is Russo Development. They went before the planning board in the spring with a proposal for a 250-unit project on the Wells Fargo site, which is across from the municipal golf course down on River Road. That was not included in our plan. They would like to be included. The second one is from Incline Capital. They approached the city with a project for 300 units. This would be on the corner of Broad and Summit Avenue where the Conoco Gas Station is, as well as the TD Bank Building. That 300-unit proposal is eight stories tall. That is what we are seeing. That, we did not put that into our plan, and they are asking to be put into our plan. In addition, Fair Share Housing, which is the developer-funded advocacy group for all this, has also opposed our plan. Our council says they hear they are, we're in good company. They're opposing, I think the number's 414 plans statewide, so they're effectively opposing the vast majority of municipalities' plans. So this is the law that we're dealing with. We're going to go into this mediation process now that's going to begin. Anyone who tells you that they know how it's all going to play out is lying to you because this is new. They haven't even figured out, like, what town's obligation, what the actual law says around what people's obligations are. So all this will have to get adjudicated. We are going to, we believe our plan is fair, it's sound, it deals with adding affordable housing. We want to do that, but in a fashion that is consistent with the character of our town and the fact that we have a built-out community. So I will keep everyone abreast as that moves forward. In addition, the city was sued around the, by the Tatlock Community Preservation Association, I think I got that right. Effectively, they are opposing lights to go up on Tatlock Field. They specifically cited opposition to the bond ordinance that got passed unanimously at the end of July, as well as the resolution that everyone supported but won, to support the installation of lights and the collection of private funds for both upper and lower Tatlock lights. And again, we'll see where that goes as well. So a couple, so I hope that gives the community a sense for what's been going on from that perspective. We're in litigation, so there's not much more you can say about that kind of stuff, but people should know what's happening. And with that, that is my report. Okay. Now we're moving on to our historical minute. Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. For this evening's historical minute, we're joined by Paula Mooney, a Summit resident, longtime volunteer, and Board Trustee of HTTV, as well as an accomplished interior designer and author, along with lifetime Summit resident, longtime hilltopper, and dedicated volunteer serving on Grace, Zoning Board, and countless other organizations, I'm sure. Liz Newell.
Thank you. I would like to give you a history of CAT. C-A-T stands for Community Access Television, and it all began in 1980 with the Cable Franchise Policy and Communications Act. At that time, Congress required cable operators like Comcast and others to designate a channel for towns and cities to be used for public good and education. A town was given a cable television franchise fee based on the number of households that subscribe to it. Hence, Summit and the neighboring towns opted in, and Community on Cables was born in 1980 as a nonprofit. In those early years, we were hyper-local, providing community news, coverage of local events, and municipal meetings. Today, we are much more. Now Hometown TV, also known as HTTV, is keeping pace with the changing world, its technology, and the rising cost of equipment. We are now a production company and have a presence on social media, and soon, we will be offering live streaming, which means we will be able to offer major networks the ability to come to our studio and use it as a satellite to report in live time. This is big stuff. History is being made every day in our humble studio, which is located at Central Presbyterian Church. We are very grateful to have this space, and in that studio, we interview prominent politicians, comedians, sports stars, authors, doctors, lawyers, chefs, and even a writer of Saturday Night Live. In summary, HTTV is the voice of Summit. For more information, you can go online to our website, wwwhtvonline.org, and I would like to introduce my co-host list, who has a special invitation for all of you.
I have a great invitation. So we are celebrating 45 years of HTTV at the Summit Elks on October 24th. It's an 80s theme, so, because who doesn't like the 80s, with the big hair and shoulder pads? And high school. Tammy. So we would love to invite you to join us to celebrate 45 years of really a wonderful gem in Summit that not a lot of people know about. So, you know, come join us, and I sent this to you, Rosemary, but I'm going to...
I already forwarded the invitation to everyone.
Fabulous. Excellent.
Thank you.
Hope you can make it and turn back time.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. We have a proclamation this evening, do we not, Madam Mayor?
Do indeed.
I think I've figured this out by now. Whereas health and safety are paramount to a sound community, and whereas since July 28th, 1962, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have provided a vital public service to our community in support of health and safety, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have given an untold number of hours of service to Summit residents and patrons of our businesses and medical institutions, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad answered more than 2,400 emergency calls for help last year for Summit residents, visitors, and from surrounding communities in need of mutual aid support, and whereas Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have responded to all emergencies of all types, all hours of day and night, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, whereas, in addition to 911 emergency calls, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members regularly provide non-emergency coverage at many community events, and whereas the efforts of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members, all of whom are volunteers, should not go unrecognized, and whereas the dedication and hard work of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members provides quality care at no cost to the patient or taxpayer, saving the City of Summit approximately $2 million per year. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad Month in the City of Summit in recognition of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad and the importance of all the good deeds contributed by its many volunteers for 63 years, and I ask all citizens to join me in praising these volunteers and lending the squad your financial support. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2025.
Mayor, thank you very much, and on behalf of all of the members at Summit First Aid Squad, we truly appreciate this proclamation. And as you've stated, for the past 63 years, this city has been blessed with volunteer EMS, which enables us to provide rapid response times to families when they are in need. So, but we can't do it if we don't have volunteers and financial support. So this is a time in New Jersey where many squads are folding because of lack of volunteers. Luckily, we're still strong, but we need your help. We need bodies, and your financial support is greatly appreciated. So thank you very much.
At this time, following on at least a partial theme of our first responders, we have a presentation this evening from Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness in Summit. It's an update by Ms. Leah Griffith, who is the Chair of that amazing task force.
So again, Leah Griffith, Chair of the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness. So 14 months ago, the mayor convened the homeless task force. The group consists of Summit Police Department, Summit Fire, Summit EMS, clergy, Bridges and Bridgeway, residents, downtown business owners. The diversity of the group has been our strength. Summit had a problem. A large group of single, unsheltered men, around 57-plus at peak, had declared Summit their de facto home. A drinking culture existed that became dangerous. The 911 response system was being taxed at unsustainable levels. We were receiving complaints about the unsafe culture of the train station and town green. Note that 97-plus percent of our homeless did not lose housing in Summit. Mental health and addiction were key drivers for loss of housing for the majority of our population. So what did we do? We commenced with outreach. Summit PD, Summit EMS, Bridges and Bridgeway met people where they were. Summit PD began stricter enforcement of basic quality-of-life existing statutes such as open alcohol container, public urination. We worked with feeding programs in town to become case management forward. We took a complete housing-first approach, not comfort in being unhoused. This council, thanks to efforts from this council, we secured state rapid rehousing funds, which became crucial to our efforts. We closed unsafe encampments in the post office vestibule and train station. We hope the results are obvious. We've housed individuals in traditional leased apartments with case management supports, shared housing, senior housing, supportive housing, Section 8 vouchers, et cetera. Any way we could get it done, we have gotten it done. In addition, others have been placed in various shared family re-engagement, long-term Airbnb, long-term alcohol rehab programs. This is all the work of outreach and case management. It's not been easy. It's taken a lot of sustained effort, but we have reached what is referred to as functional zero in terms of our population. We hope you've noticed the massive difference downtown, in the business district, the train station, and the library. We have a few who resist any housing. We continue to work with them, but the vast majority have been housed or, you know, in safe environments. Additionally, and most importantly, we have two key things in place: stabilization case management to keep those housed in their housing and ongoing, and ongoing outreach case management in key areas in town to help those who come to or end up in Summit who are in need of assistance. These two key pieces are the cornerstone of the task force's success. The continued communication among first responders and case management enables us to help people quickly and connect them to resources. This case management has really been crucial. We continue to work with the state and the county on shelter space and prevention. Prevention is the, will be the focus of the task force this fall as we work within our community as well as other communities to help to prevent homelessness from occurring. While Summit is not immune, we have excellent prevention resources in town, such as Grace, Houses of Worship, low-income senior, and other housing, and most importantly, connections to case management. We've been asked to share our model with other communities, both the work of the task force as well as the work of the, of the prevention work of Grace, and we hope our work will serve as a model to other communities. I would be remiss in not, I know I'm biased, but I, the, the response to the 911 response in this community is extraordinary, led by our Summit PD. The number of times that they have responded to 911 calls with grace, with dignity, and really, you know, we have really helped so many people with just compassionate response, and I just want to applaud our Summit PD and my fellow EMS volunteers for that effort. And then lastly, I just want to thank the mayor and the council and every member of the task force for their time and commitment. It's been a ton of time, but it's been extremely rewarding to help those in need and just to see the great success of so many here in our community and in other communities. So, thank you. And I'm always willing to answer any questions if anyone wants to talk to me offline. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very nice.
I just think, you know, as certainly from my perspective, we owe you a huge thanks and gratitude. Your tireless effort, I know you mentioned it, it takes a lot of people all pulling in the same direction, but need someone to lead them, and you've done an amazing, amazing job. And as you mentioned, the results do really speak for themselves. This was an incredible initiative, and again, I think it's one that other towns should emulate, and we're actually talking to people about maybe doing a case study on this amazing program, because it is something that other towns should, should do, because the results do speak for themselves. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Council President.
Yes.
Just a quick question, just so that folks at home could, could depict the magnitude. Do we know how many unhoused we started with in 2024 and then where we are now? I don't know if, I wanted to...
I'll give you...
Can you?
Sure.
It's a little hard because it's a bit of a moving target, but we, we started between, with between 55 and 60, and we think we are down to two.
Thank you for that.
Council President.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
I just want to highlight again Leah's efforts. She not only was a great leader, but, but she's a great leader because she really rolled up her sleeves. She was out there with the case managers, with the mental health providers on the street talking to our homeless individuals, trying to get them to engage. So it was a lot of hours. She was the point person for the phone calls that came in for the, from the residents a lot of the time. I would say most of the time. Or Delia, one of them too. But I just, it was, it was an incredible effort, and so to you, we owe a major, major debt of gratitude, and also in your role as, with the First Aid Squad, you're doing incredible things, and we're really grateful to have you. Thanks, Leah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet.
I just want to, did all the comments for Leah. Your leadership in this has been inspiring, to say the least. I don't know if anybody remembers, but during the camping ordinance, one of the unhoused gentlemen came up to the podium, and he actually gave an address, and I thought that was a really moving moment for him to give his address, and I don't know if anybody caught on to it. The one thing I also want to mention is some of these folks need work. We're trying to find them work, but if business owners or, you know, Tammy, I'm not sure if DPW or, you know, any, any city rolls, we're looking at crossing guards, there's two in particular are really looking for work, and I think that's a really important part of this process, is giving them, you know, something to be a part of. So I would be welcome to any ideas, and we're constantly still talking to all of them now. So, but just great job.
Thank you. All right. All right. So we're moving on now to our section for ordinances for hearing. We do have one that Councilwoman Smallwood's going to speak a little bit about, but Madam Clerk, could you please read the Community Program and Parking Services Ordinance for Hearing?
Ordinance Number 25-3353, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to make a motion to table this, this ordinance, and I will explain, there's a new ordinance for introduction for tonight, and I'll do more explanation of why we are tabling this ordinance tonight.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So that ordinance is tabled, so there won't be an ordinance for final consideration. That's going to move us along to ordinances for introduction. The first ordinance is coming from Law and Labor. Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance 12137?
An ordinance authorizing the City of Summit to exchange certain real property for the, for other lands desired for public use pursuant to the Local Lands and Buildings Law, NJSA 40A:12-16.
Thank you so much. Councilman Pulaski.
This ordinance authorizes, this is an ordinance number 12137, titled an ordinance authorizing the City of Summit to exchange certain real property for other lands desired for public use pursuant to the Local Lands and Buildings Law. With this ordinance, the City of Summit will be authorized to exchange certain real property for other lands desired for public use. More specifically, the city seeks to acquire a portion of real property having an address of 402 Broad Street, Block 207, Lot 6, currently owned by 299 Morris Avenue Associates, LLC. As consideration for this acquisition, the city will convey a portion of real property it owns, having an address of 3... it owns, having an address of 384 to 392 Broad Street, Block 2706, Lot 3, 2299 Morris Avenue Associates LLC, plus the sum of $175,000. This is the property located at and around the old firehouse. And our property that we own in that area is not contiguous. This acquisition will allow the sale of contiguous lots, which we believe will allow for its sale at a higher price. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to our second ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, will you please read the Community Programs and Parking Services Ordinance 12119?
An ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Just to explain, the ordinance that was introduced in, in July, let me, let me start here. As most may know, that the Tier Garage, that's off of Springfield Avenue, we had to, based on our engineer's perspective, we needed to, from a safety standpoint, close down the third and fourth floors, simply reducing the number of employee parking in our downtown. As such, you know, there's been, from my days back on SDI, starting in 2010, there's always a problem, there's always a parking problem. The only parking problem that we've ever had in Summit is the fact that you can't find the parking spot in front of the store you want to go into. We've never really had a parking problem, until now. Now we have a parking problem. So, after, you know, going through our committee, we asked our parking director, Nicole Swicki, to come up with three different solutions, and the first solution is the one that we actually introduced in July. There's a difference between ordinances and resolutions, and the difference between the ordinance and the resolutions is, an ordinance is actually really creating a law, and the, it gives you an introduction of the ordinance, and then time in between for the next meeting for resident feedback, and then a hearing and the second meeting. From the time that we introduced that ordinance in July, we received a lot of feedback from employees, shoppers, shop owners, residents, and from that feedback, we decided to look at one of the other options that we had, and we felt that as a committee, that that was the better option. From my perspective, we need to prioritize. Our prioritization is, number one, residents, our taxpayers. Number two, employees and shoppers, and number three, non-resident commuters. Non-resident commuters do pay a higher parking fee on a daily basis and does generate revenue. However, our number one priority is to our residents, and for our residents, it's our downtown, which is our most precious, precious, other than our schools, it's the most precious thing that we have in our, in our, in our city. So, by prioritizing our residents first, our employees and shoppers, we decided to simply reduce the number of non-resident commuters in the Broad Street Garage. In the previous ordinance, the, we would be reducing resident parking and employee parking in the Sampson Lot, which is the middle school lot. That's where we heard some feedback from. So, as council members, this isn't our full-time job. We relied on our parking director to give us three simple solutions. The first one, as we introduced, we received some serious feedback on. So as a council, we adjusted to what we heard from the feedback and also the, the recommendation from our parking director, and that's the reason why I tabled the first ordinance tonight. The second, this ordinance here will allow for us to reduce the number of non-resident parking at the Broad Street Garage. So right now, we have, we will have 87 non-resident parking spaces, and we will be opening up 84 employee and resident commuter parking at the Broad Street Garage on the top-tier level. We will also be adding eight parking, street parking spaces on DeForest Avenue for our employees. Again, this is a very difficult decision to make because we do now have a parking problem, and it's something that we have to resolve very quickly. I did hear some very good news tonight from our business administrator that last week, ONS, who is the engineer that came and gave us a presentation earlier this year regarding the repair of our Tier Garage, that we will be getting a report hopefully by next week with better news and a time, hopefully a timeline on when we will be able to have that repaired, award the, award the project, have it repaired, and get those parking spaces back as soon as possible. You know, one of the things that we have to do is, we have to compromise revenue from non-resident parking to prioritize our residents, our employees, and our shoppers, because in my standpoint, that's our real revenue, that's our job to protect, that's who we represent. And in the meantime, our non-resident parkers unfortunately will be reduced the number of spaces that they will be able to park in, and that's the reason why we tabled the first ordinance and reintroducing this ordinance tonight. So I, I apologize for the long, long-winded, you know, explanation of that, but I wanted to, I wanted to explain how we got to this point, why we tabled it, and why we decided to go with another option that our director had, had given us. So with that, I would like to move this ordinance for our introduction.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, on to our Capital Projects and Community Services ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance number 12049?
An ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing Section 2-29, Historic Preservation Commission of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit, and creating a new Part 5 Historic Preservation of Chapter 35 Development Regulations.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
I'm going to let Councilwoman Pulowski handle this one since he worked mostly on this one. Okay?
So this is ordinance ID number 12049, and for a long time, maybe 20 years, the city has been troubled by the demolition of its historical homes and other buildings. If you go to, if you own historic property and you want to make a renovation, for example, depending on the type of permit that you apply for, it goes to the Historic Preservation Commission for a review, and then they provide advice. The Historic Preservation has always been and will continue to only be an advisory body, but there was a loophole. If you wanted to simply demolish your home, even if it was George Washington's birthplace, all you had to do is come in, fill out some paperwork, and you could demolish it without the HPC even knowing, let alone giving them an opportunity to review it. In the past, the council has toyed with the idea of a stronger, like a very strong Historic Preservation Ordinance, like the ones that Milburn and Morristown have, which actually preclude owners of historical buildings and historic homes from demolishing their property without permission. And those municipalities can say no, but we've never had an appetite to do that here in Summit. Your home is your castle, and you should be able to do with it what you like, but not everyone's educated on the significance of certain homes. The one big example that jumps to mind is, I can't remember the number, but it was on Robin Hood Lane. I think it, Claire, you might be able to help me with this. I think it won some architectural awards. Was it designed by like Frank Lloyd Wright or something like that? I don't know.
It predates Frank Lloyd Wright.
Oh, okay, even better. So that house was just knocked down, and the HPC was left with their head spinning. What happened? So, we've been working for a couple of years to try to find a way to balance our property owners' rights with our desire to preserve the character of Summit. So the purpose of this ordinance is to allow the city an opportunity to both educate the public and demonstrate the historical significance of some properties within the City of Summit, and it will do so in the following ways. The ordinance will repeal the prior ordinance and create a new Historic Preservation Section of the Development Regulations Ordinance, which you may also know as the DRO. Again, this will maintain the Historic Preservation Commission as a purely advisory body whose focus is to both educate the public and help protect Summit's historic character. The primary changes within this ordinance are as follows. Any real property within the City of Summit which was constructed a minimum of 100 years ago and/or is located within a historic district is deemed historic property. To provide the Historic Preservation Commission the opportunity to educate the owners of historic homes and properties, the city will be testing a new form of historic review referred to as a historic site verification. Prior to filing for a demolition permit application with the Construction Division or filing for a zoning permit application that would demolish a significant portion of the front of an historic home with the Land Use Division, property owners would first apply to receive a historic site verification, which will have a modest filing fee of $50. The Historic Preservation Commission holds a responsibility to the property owner that they must first respond to your request for an application within seven days, and if accepted, the HPC is responsible for, for providing the applicant with their written and signed report within 30 calendar days of its acceptance. This historic site verification is a required but non-binding, commentative, and educational report on your home that hopes to demonstrate the value and historical significance that your property contributes to the character of Summit. It should be noted that this ordinance is a first attempt at active historic preservation within the city, and the enforceability and application of this ordinance will be reviewed within six months' time of its adoption for continued feasibility. So, in other words, it's a pilot program, and we're going to see how it works, and we hope that it does work. Again, we're not going to be encumbering property, we're not going to be adding deed restrictions on anybody's property, and it is a pilot program, and we hope that it is a success and that we can manage to keep some of our historic homes from going the way of the dodo. With that, I move to introduce this ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Okay, we're on to Capital Projects and Community Services Ordinance for Introduction Number Two. Madam Clerk, will you please read ID 12144, please?
Ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, amending Chapter 35 Development Regulations by repealing the existing Morris Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone District to be replaced with a new zone district that retains the intent of the overlay zone.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 12144. Just to provide a little bit of clarification, after the city clerk just read the introduction, the MBC overlay zone was designed to achieve several goals. First was to repurpose the site, given the relocation of the fire department. So just for, to back up a little bit, this is the area that encompasses the properties near the old firehouse, so Broad Street West, don't want to bring up a bad, a bad term, but, so the repurpose the site, given the relocation of the fire department. Number two, generate revenue for the city at the point of sale annually. Number three, satisfy a portion of the city's affordable housing obligation. Number four, maintain existing public parking and parking for St. Teresa's Memorial Hall. And number five, develop the site in a comprehensive manner that is consistent with the character of Summit based on community feedback. The ordinance is being introduced serves several primary purposes. It modifies the overlaying zone to standard zoning in accordance with the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan adopted in June to maximize affordable housing credits. It also works to adjust the bulk requirements to accommodate the land swap with the owners of Lot 2. So for, this is a really important ordinance that we're introducing because at the end of this, we will be able to, after this goes to the planning board, put that property up for sale and get tax ratables back for the residents who fought so hard for the overdevelopment there. So very excited to, and thanks to all the staff who worked on this ordinance, like to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. That's it for ordinances for introductions. We're on to the resolution portion of our meeting. We've got a few from Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Council President?
Yes.
Do you think it's possible for us to, to put together one and two, and then three and four?
We're pulling two.
We're pulling two, I believe, right? Yep, because that isn't available, so two is number pulled. You want to bundle one, three, and four, Councilwoman Hamlet? What do you think?
Or just?
I would bundle three and four.
Three and four.
All right, so let's, okay, so let's go with one first, and then we'll look to bundle the other two.
Okay. So this is Resolution 11936. In accordance with the City Treasurer Certification of Availability of Funds from account numbers ending in 300 and 030 as provided in the packet, pursuant to Educational Services, Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing Contract, a purchase order in the amount of $141,572.50 be issued to Gabrielle Kenworth, and this is for the garbage truck that was in our budget, so this will go towards a co-op. Sorry, this will go, this will go through the co-op in Kenworth. I'd like to introduce this ordinance.
It's a resolution.
Sorry, resolution.
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council?
I just have one, I'm just looking at a, I just want to make sure this isn't a Scribner's error. Can you just confirm the price of this garbage truck, Director Schager? I'm looking at two different numbers here, and I just want to confirm. Because I think the, so I guess my question is, there's two different, there's two different prices in here, and I apologize, I didn't notice it before. I think the total of 291 is right, but it's broken up into two different purchase orders.
So you, Council President, we have to verify because this is two purchase orders or two different entities, so...
I think that's what it is.
Yeah, I can't quickly just check which ones, if it matches up.
Yeah, that's okay. I just noticed it. I've talked to you 10 times today, and I apologize.
No, that's, I mean, what will be certified is what the cost is. It's going to be roughly that cost.
So that makes sense that it's two separate purchase orders, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Because one is actually, you're buying just a standard body, it's just in what you put on it, which is the packer and stuff that's separate.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Right, fair enough. That makes sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Schager. Other comments from council? Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Director Schager, what, what color is it? Do we, is it, did we get a nice color? Is it red and some maroon?
No, we have switched, we, we did, like, and through you, Council President, but in the past, the maroon trucks were adding significant cost and time delay, so we are switching to a white truck fleet just because it's what's generally more in stock, but yes, this will be white like the newer ones that are out there.
I was just going to say, for $291,000, we should be able to pick the color. I was just going to say, for $291,000, we should be able to pick the color.
I would agree, it just unfortunately adds some dollars in time, but yeah.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor? Oh, all in favor, yep? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are pulling Resolution Number Two. And then Councilwoman Hamlet, you want to bundle Resolution Number Three and Four?
Sure. That's fine. And just so for, to educate the public on why Number Two was pulled is because that cooperative no longer exists, so we'll have to go out to bid for that transfer trailer. So I would like to bundle 12067, which authorizes grant application submission NJDEP leaf composting grant program as well as 12120, which is authorizing grant submission for NJDEP Green Communities Grant Program. And I will bundle those. These are grants that we've received before. Correct, Director Schager? Pretty routine.
Yes, through you, Council President, correct. The one for the composting is newer just because it's for a permit that DEP just required a year ago, so yes.
And the second one is focused on more stormwater management for the leaf composting and then the first one is more what we can do with trees and leaf canopies and such. So I'd like to move those resolutions.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects and Community Services, Number Five, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. This is 12111. So pay attention, if you live in the Memorial Field area, you'll be pretty excited about this one. This is regarding the Tulip Project, Tulip Street Project. Seven bids were received and opened on Tuesday, August 19. And the lowest bidder was crossroad paving in the amount of $417,090. This contractor had also done Butler Parkway, so it sounds as though the residents were happy with that. This project will receive grant reimbursement funding from NJDOT for $312,000 and Union County for $75,000. So I think this is very exciting. A lot of those residents are experiencing flooding. I've been hearing about it since even before I was on council. So I think that this will tremendously improve that area. So I thank Director Schager for all of your hard work. It is a lot of work to put these bids together, so we're looking forward to moving forward with this resolution.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? I just want to confirm, so Councilwoman Hamlet, maybe Director Schager can answer. So we've gotten money to cover a substantial portion of this project. Do you want to just explain that process a little bit, Mr. Schager?
Yes, absolutely. So there are two grants that we have for this that cover essentially almost all of it. The first one is what's called an NJDOT Local Aid Grant, which the city has gotten annually since at least 2008, which is funding for roads, not just to run of the mill roads, but connect the county roads, service schools, parks, which Tulip does. So that is for $312,380. And then the county for their annual grant, they've given us $75,000. So that gets us close to about $387 for the total cost, which is $417. So it's, you know, it shouldn't be much expense to the city's capital budget. And we look forward to doing this. It's been a long time coming, so.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on getting those grants. Okay, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving right along to finance resolutions. There is one. Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 12072. And this resolution extends for one year the city's contract with Prime Point LLC to provide payroll, HR, and time and attendance services. Prime Point has been Summit's vendor since 2021, but is satisfied with their services. The new contract is for $61,000. The city will ultimately pay a bit less than that because Prime Point also services the library under this contract and the library reimburses the city for their ratable share, though they have far fewer employees than we do. I believe we also get some reimbursement from bank fees. But I move to adopt this resolution.
I second. Comments from the public? Okay, comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'm sure everybody knows what my comment is going to be. But I would say that if we've had them for six years, I'm sure they're wonderful, but I would imagine, Tammy, that this would be one of the ones that would come up for an RFP next year, or no?
Through you, Council President, we can do that. Right now, we have auditor, bond counsel, and financial advisor on a three-year cycle. But I will say, we've looked at other HR and payroll packages and for the price and what we get for that, we haven't found anything comparable.
Okay, so we're still looking at it and you're happy?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilwoman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. And being in the payroll business, I work with Prime Point as well. And they are a reputable payroll provider specifically for municipalities. The only other, the only other payroll provider that I find that is comparable and that does just as many municipalities as Edmunds. So maybe next year, maybe we could get a quote from Edmunds because I know that we currently use Edmunds system as well. But I've heard nothing but positive things about Prime Point.
Great. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to safety and health. Councilman Boyer, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 1210, which authorizes the city of Summit to apply for a grant through the 2025 New Jersey Department of Criminal Justice Body Armor Repacement Program. This program provides financial support to our law enforcement agencies for the purchase of New Jersey-compliant body armor, which, as we all know, is critical to our police officers' safety. The grant, if awarded, would help cover the cost of the replacement of the vests. I believe these vests, they do need to be replaced, even if they're not used, God forbid, right? I think they have a five-year life to them and they're rather expensive. So I hope that we get this grant. I move this resolution forward.
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Hearing none. Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, next, we have a Community Programs and Parking Services Resolution. Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 12110, authorizing execution of grant agreement with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program for Maybe Playground Improvements. This is for, hopefully, the final step of completing the Maybe Playground before we can actually go to award the contractor in the amount of, to receive the amount of $750,000 from Green Acres. One of the most difficult things being on council is trying to understand the length of time it takes. And being a private business owner, I want, if it doesn't get done now, it doesn't, it's, we got to get going. I was given a very good lesson today by Director Schager as to why this process has taken so long. When we first went out to bid for Maybe Playground, we had X amount of dollars. And the contractors that came in and bid on it were much higher than the amount of money, much higher than the amount that we actually, we had. So we rejected those bids and we decided that we were going to, all right, see what we can do to maneuver the Maybe Playground so that we could go out to rebid again. And even with just simply minor adjustments, it takes time and money to receive those bids back. This is the final piece of receiving the additional, the grant money for the $750,000. We hope to go out or award this, I believe Director Schager award this bid next meeting?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And then start construction. Hopefully, they'll give us a date sometime in early fall of when they will start Maybe Playground. Just to give you an example of how long things take in government, over a year and a half ago, we had a construction of a bike depot right there on the corner of Summit Avenue and Union Place by on the transfer, or the New Jersey Transit property. That was constructed over a year and a half ago. There's never been a bike in there.
It's open.
Is it open now?
It is open.
Okay. When, what was that?
It's been a couple of weeks.
Okay. Just recently, it was, I apologize for not having the date, but just recently, it was open. But for a year and a half, because of delays and having to rely on certain contractors, certain agencies to get things done is painful. And I know that it's taken a long time to get the Maybe Playground to the point where we can start deconstructing and construction of this playground. But this has always been a focus of this council and I do want to thank the previous council members for working on this as well. Just, we've been here for 18 months and this started prior to that. So we are coming to a completion point. We're getting there. And by, hopefully, this will pass unanimously, this resolution will pass unanimously and we can award a contract at the next council meeting. So I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Council President? Hold on, I'm going to ask members of the public to comment first. Anyone wishing to comment on this resolution, please step forward. Okay.
Counsel?
Councilman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. It's only been a summary, you've forgotten my name already, but you know.
Not yet.
No, so I will say something about the plan, though. There, I don't know if y'all noticed this, there is a huge hump that runs from Elm Street, right, across to Summit Avenue in the middle of the Village Green where Maybe Playground is. I have no idea why that is there. It makes absolutely no sense. My, my recommendation, and I hope that we all agree, is that we remove that hump, which is supposed to be something, I guess somebody goes up there and reads poetry to people, I don't know. Amphitheater. I mean, okay, let me, some things happen and I'm just like, it makes no friggin' sense. I hope that we can flatten it out again, right, so that it's a normal place and people can actually walk on it, sit on it. You know, you can actually put your stroller on it. And I hope this can be a part of the Maybe Playground construction because that absolutely makes no sense whatsoever. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Councilman Boyer, for your comments. I think, David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was part of the, Aaron, it was part of the Village Green Master Plan? Back in, how many years ago?
Yes, through you, Council President. I believe it was 2008, that roadside in Harwell did a Village Green Master Plan. I believe they referred to it as a grassy knoll to make it a little more appetizing. But that is why it was in there. At the time, the Village Green had a little different programming where a lot of sports, kind of just organic programming was happening there. So there was a desire to kind of keep that separate. Times have changed, so, I mean, we're obviously open to, you know, hump removal or whatever the governing body decides.
But if I could also add, and, you know, to have a discussion with the public about this one, because I see a lot on social media that this council's not getting playgrounds done. And, you know, our staff works really hard. Those two gentlemen in the second row worked every day to get these playgrounds done. And going back even further to when all of you started on council, we had to redesign the Village Green Transit Project in order to save money on Maybe Playground. So there are a lot of reasons and a lot of things that we don't share because it's just too complicated. We saved a ton of money on lights through the Village Green Transit Project that had to be done because you can't do the playground before you do the lights. So these two gentlemen worked tirelessly and that's a direct reflection on our staff. And, you know, we spent the last 45 days working with DEP, Bruce Beckhoff. I've had more conversations with DEP. There are a lot of requirements that just have to be done. It's the way government works. I don't like it either, but the social media comments that this council's not getting playgrounds done is factually false. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Toth?
Thank you, Council President. Certainly, I support this resolution. As Councilman Smallwood pointed out, it has been a long time coming. But it's going to enable Summit to build the Maybe Playground as originally envisioned rather than having to make significant cuts to what's there. And I think that, you know, again, yes, thank you, gentlemen, for getting this grant over the finish line so that we can build the first truly inclusive playground in town.
Good comment. Other comments? Councilman Pulowski?
So I'm very happy that we're getting this done. And I also would like to thank this council, the prior councils, Marco Zaroski, who's our Director of Community Programs, and especially David Weida, who I know really worked hard to get us back on track and find a way to get it done without any further delay. As to the various comments about the snail's pace that government often works at, I just want to say that anyone who embraces the slow and deliberate pace of municipal government, you know who you are out there, has more patience than me and I can attest, more patience than our residents.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I will say, just around pace of government. You know, when I first got on council a long time ago, I was one of those people, we're going to change things. We're going to get things done. It's got to operate like a business. It's, why not? Blah, 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 blah. And you quickly realize there's reasons that things take longer in government. Your constituents aren't shareholders. You're not trying to make a buck. You're trying to make sure that the people who live in your community are happy and satisfied and are getting value for their money. Now, government, I think, is easily open to reform on how some of these processes work because they can be painfully slow. And it does take people who are willing to push and continue to push so it doesn't grind to a halt. But the reason it's slow is because, as Councilman Smallwood mentioned about the parking ordinance that got pulled, you want feedback. You want to have an opportunity to listen, to make changes. You want to make sure when you're spending people's money that you're getting the right price. And these rules are all created for checks and so that stuff happens. So from the outside looking in, like, oh my God, the playground hasn't been built forever. What are you guys doing? You're shepherding a process. And the process, it's not perfect, of course not. And you're trying to push it to make it more perfect. But again, you want it done right. And the reason it's not a business is because people out there, you guys aren't shareholders. You guys are part of the community and we're trying to service you in the best way you can with your tax dollars, not to try and make a profit on things like that. So it just, it operates differently. And I appreciate people who have patience, who understand the process, who want to be involved in the process, give constructive comments, not to stand on the sidelines and yell and scream that, you know, it's too slow. There's a reason for it. So I too thank you guys for getting us over the finish line and I agree. It's going to be awesome when we get the first inclusive playground in town built, so thank you for that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Last resolution from Law and Labor, Councilman Pulowski?
I believe he's going to defer.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm just going to introduce that one.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toth.
Yes. Resolution ID 12105 would amend the city's agreement... Resolution ID 12105 would amend the city's agreement with Otulis Scrivo LLC, the attorneys who represent us in the Broad Street West litigation. The agreement was originally for $75,000, but we're in litigation, litigation is unpredictable, it's expensive, and by amending the agreement to add an additional $75,000, the expectation is that this will get us through the year without having to go back to the well one more time. Our CFO has certified that the funds are available to cover this increased contract, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Do I ever second?
Begrudgingly, I'll second this.
Okay. Do I have any comments from the public? All right, comments from council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
I'd like to know from our city administrator, what is the, what's the total bill right now for legal services in Broad Street West?
Through you, Council President, I believe it's approximately $91,000 spent, and they have just completed a big portion of discovery, so the bills went up a little bit. There is $150,000 budgeted for litigation, so this additional 75 should carry us through, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick statement about legal fees in the Broad Street West. You know, I'd really like the taxpayers' money to be spent on tangible things, right? This could go to something that actually benefits the community, as opposed to legal fees. I know sometimes the city gets sued for things, right, but the Broad Street West is like a never-ending coal, and I guess a coal that you gotta take to the hospital now, because, you know, it just doesn't end. And these legal fees are just, I mean, they're astronomical, and now we have to do a resolution because we don't even know how much we're gonna pay at the end of the day. It just, that's all.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I would just echo that, you know, again, this is just the sad hangover of a very long and torturous process for our community. It sadly is still playing out in money that we could be spending somewhere else. And I hope this comes to conclusion soon, and then we can put Broad Street West behind us for good, hopefully when we can sell this property and actually have it as an asset that we have a ratable that can make some money for the city eventually, rather than just take up the community's time and effort in our legal prospect, and this has, as I said, been going on for years, sadly. But that's what it is. All right. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. All right, we're now on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Are, anyone from the public wish to make a comment on anything on the consent agenda? No? How about council? Councilwoman Hannity.
This is a pretty interesting consent agenda, if you haven't looked at it. I just want to point out some really important things in this consent agenda. First, and maybe Mayor, you can speak to this a little bit, but I was very excited to see the Motor Vehicle Commission mobile unit come back. I think that's something that I'm sure Jenny will be communicating to the public, so we'll have a mobile motor vehicle here at City Hall. That was a huge win. Mayor, I'm not sure how you got it done, or maybe Chief Peters worked some magic, but the residents have been asking for that. It's really hard to get an appointment. Secondly, I wanted to mention, I spoke with Sharon O'Sullivan today from Summit Public Art, and on here, there are two public art installations. I know, Michelle, you're the liaison to that, but I did take some time to speak to Sharon today, because I forgot you were the liaison. But we have two very important pieces of art coming to the city, and the large piece, the honeycomb-shaped, very large piece near the train station, will be removed soon, so if you wanted to take a final look at that, that would be your opportunity. And then finally, on that note, there is a Summit Public Art fundraiser on September 26 at the Fort Nightly Club, so I just wanted to share that with the community. And I just want, I'm not sure if number 12115 was polled, Council President, but I just want to make sure that wasn't on there, the 159, it was in my printed-out one from, so it's off, right? It's on mine, it's on mine, because I got it printed out last week. Okay. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that Resolution 12104, these are the repayments from taxes that residents or property owners have paid, and I noticed on that one, it was a pretty large one, it was $62,000, and it was for 133 Summit Avenue. I think it's important, even as a taxpayer, to sort of look at those and understand why they happened. In speaking to our tax collector today, they had made an overpayment, so you'll see, the overpayment actually goes to that organization, that's the way we have to send those payments back. So just sort of an interesting fact, just, we do get those throughout the year, and that was a very large one, so. I think that was about it, I just thought this was a cool consent agenda, so there's lots of good stuff in there. And the volunteer firefighters.
True. Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. All right, that is it for our business portion of our meeting. Please, our staff, thank you for attending, have a safe drive home. This is now our public comment section of our meeting. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment, please approach the dais, give your name and your address, and please, in order to have everyone's heard, please limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Good evening, Tom Zebra, 768 Springfield Avenue. I want to begin by commending this council and our mayor for the responsible and steady way that you've managed Summit's affordable housing obligations this year. These are not easy issues, especially in a community like ours that is already fully built out, yet you've handled it with balance, thoughtfulness, and fiscal responsibility. What concerns me is the rhetoric we're hearing from some voices in town, demanding even more net new affordable housing. To me, that approach is reckless. It risks overdevelopment, strains our infrastructure, and ultimately places a heavy burden on Summit taxpayers. The right path forward is what you're already doing, which is meeting our legal obligations while at the same time maintaining the quality and character of our neighborhoods. Equally important, we should focus resources on ensuring that the affordable and low-income housing already here in Summit is safe, well-maintained, and truly serves the people who live in it. I appreciate the leadership shown by this council and our mayor on this issue, and I urge you to continue standing firm against calls for excessive development that would jeopardize both our community's character and its fiscal health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If that's a prepared statement, can you email it to the clerk? Thank you very much. Other comments, please?
My name is Davida Williams, I live at Two Weaver Street apartment before at Summit Housing. I just have a brief statement. I was kind of rushed, I apologize for my appearance, I didn't know I was gonna be in a courtroom. And, okay.
It's okay, you were born to be great.
Exactly.
Thanks. I'm so nervous.
A great outfit, actually.
Again, I wrote it down, my apologies for my tie. We were told the meeting was Tuesday, but it's today. And I know it's a statement, so don't answer the questions. Okay. Question, how do they choose the committee or the staff for Summit Housing Authority? How do they choose the people that represent the tenants that live in Summit Housing? How does Jackie Roundtree renew our certifications? How does Michelle White, excuse me, Michelle White, Jacqueline, and Jackie decide these For the last two years, I've got at least two extra calls to the office, because they have redone my rent, and a month or two later, they have raised it, and then I also have to pay security on top of that. They make a payment plan, but however, I shouldn't have to go through this. I am on a steady income of disability, I have a senior that is in high school that has a 4.0 GPA, and we've done so well in housing for the last 10 years, but in the last three years, things have been very difficult. Michelle White, every time I speak to her, it's a different story. Why do we have to be certified to have some type of tenant get together? Her and Michelle stated that they would not even listen to us unless we were HUD certified in a tenant association. Today, this week, we came out of our pocket, made copies, and sent flyers to everyone, just to get a one, two, three question answered. How do you feel about housing maintenance and the grounds? We have an overwhelming response of over 60-some people, when at every meeting, there's no more than one or two people that show up in the monthly meetings, because they're scared to speak out towards housing. We receive a yearly exterminator list, we receive monthly, I mean yearly exams of our apartments, but however, we get notices sent at the last minute. Sometimes it's a text stating that someone is on the property right now. I have a teenage daughter, every time a maintenance man or an exterminator or someone comes, I'm not always home. She's 17. Fortunately, I was there last January, I mean July, when an exterminator came, and two strange men came to the door, I'm so nervous, came to the door. Bottom line is, I apologize.
Ms. Williams?
I can email this statement to the court.
Yeah, and please do, and this is a council, not a court, but your comments are really welcome, and I think we'll address some of these when council comments are made, but I'd love to hear, all of us would love to hear your, your statement and your concerns. So thank you.
Thank you. Also, would you like to copy of the paperwork?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. That's a perfect example of why three minutes is not enough time. Come on, guys. This is one of the lower time limits that we have in municipalities across the state. If we're gonna give the residents an opportunity to speak, we need to have more than three minutes, it's not fair. It's, something's got to, I mean, three minutes? People come to these meetings to put things on the public record. Yes, we can engage through emails, whether people respond or not, but people come here to put things on the public record, and three minutes is not enough. I think the residents of Summit deserve a little bit more, you know, respect. I think it's a slap in the face, I'm gonna keep bringing it up every meeting, I'm gonna keep coming to these meetings. You know, some people wonder, why do I come, why do I come to Summit if I don't live here? Well, because I come to Summit, that's, really doesn't have to go any farther than that. But, yeah, so we have some issues. The last, the last meeting, the last meeting, you guys approved, you guys approved the ordinance for the tatlock lighting, and then, on the same meeting, you amended the resolution, and it was, it wasn't done legally. The amendment, it wasn't, it wasn't just supportive or related, and through the chair to Mr. Giacobe, if you could pay attention and maybe respond to this, I have a formal complaint here that I'm submitting, and it outlines, it outlines why that resolution was non-compliance with New Jersey bond, with the New Jersey local bond law. You can't amend a resolution on the same night that you adopt an ordinance when it has significant changes. And they were significant change, Mr. Giacobe, if you would look at me, please? We're not. It's substantial, that's a substantial change. The way that all this works legally, what has to do with funds and directive allocation of funds and stuff, that's a substantial change. That's the way the courts look at it. It's not a supportive or relative change, you know, because you're talking about finances. So I watched that whole thing happen, and that's why I said, you know, these meetings are more entertaining than these crappy TV shows out there, because I don't think people are paying attention to the things they should be paying attention to. And through the chair to Mr. Boyer, I know you voted no for it, and your reason on Facebook was, was not the reason that it should have been, it's because, it's, because it's a non-compliance with, with the New Jersey local bond law. You guys can't amend a resolution like that and pass it on the same night that you adopt an ordinance. Is, you know, you gotta wait, you gotta wait a week, then you have to give public notice, 48 hours, for the amended resolution, you know? But we really need to have an adequate amount of speaking time for the public. Show the public the respect, give the republic, give the public the respect to have them communicate with you guys on public record. Three minutes is not enough. It's just not enough.
On cue, thank you.
I'd like to submit this?
Yes, please, to the clerk, please. Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? No other comments? Okay, I'm gonna declare the public comments section of our meeting closed. We're now on to council member comments and new business.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Would you mind if I start, so that possibly the folks from Summit Housing Authority residents, they wanted to leave law early, they could, but I just wanted to respond to them, because as a Summit Housing Authority liaison, I have been to every single meeting. And Ms. Williams, it takes great courage for you to come up here and, and say what you just said, and I respect you, and I applaud you for that, I know it's very hard. So I just want to thank you all for coming forward tonight, for going out there and taking a survey of how people feel, because the meetings that the Summit Authority has is at 5:30. The residents and the housing all said that they can't get there at 5:30. Why not? Because our most vulnerable residents work. Single parents, single homes, they can't get there at 5:30. So what did the commissioner say? Well, I'll see if it fits in my, my dinnertime. This is the type of stuff that these folks are dealing with. But today, their voices have been heard. Now, over the past 18 months, I have received numerous complaints. Residents have reported a lack of transparency, such as delayed or inaccessible grievance policies, hindering their ability to exercise their rights. Their concerns about illegal, or excuse me, security deposit increases, improper rent calculations, non-income-related charges, inadequate notifications of rent changes, all of which burdens these folks unfairly, and reports of intimidation, which is why no one wants to come up and speak, because the next thing you know, they'll be in court. They'll be sued. So, the other thing that really concerns me is that we have a Summit Housing Authority that has 195 units. It's a very small housing authority, yet these folks receive bonuses. I bet y'all ain't know that. They receive bonuses. Now, where do these bonuses come from? They don't come from HUD money, they don't come from the RAD money, because the federal government will not allow housing authorities to accept bonuses from that money. So where do these bonuses come from? They come from the residents that live there, the ones who can't afford to live there, in Section 8 housing. So you take money from them, and you pay yourself bonuses. And how did you get that money? Rent increases, legal fees, and if you say something, there's threats of retaliation. Rent increases, legal fees, and if you say something, there's threats of retaliation. The first year as liaison on the Summit Housing Authority, the chairman of the board wouldn't even come to City Hall to meet with us, because it's a highly political commission board, majority Democrat. And I bet you, if sixty people from the Summit Housing Authority came up here with a majority Republican council, people out there would be calling us racist. These days are over, and I'm glad that the residents of the Summit Housing Authority see who's in charge now and how you're being helped. And this help will continue with your help, because there needs to be a change. This commission board has no plan whatsoever. No plan to rebuild, to refurbish our Summit Housing Authority. However, most of them have a huge plan about adding more affordable housing in Summit. What a slap in the face that is. Actually, at one meeting, they had a whole part and commission to talk about affordable housing. Not about the conditions that the folks are living in, but about affordable housing to build in Summit, at a Summit Housing Authority meeting. Tell me how that makes sense. I had some other things to say tonight, but this is very, I'm very passionate about this. As you all know, I grew up in Summit. I lived on Dennis Place. I still have family members that live in both Glenwood and Weaver Street. And being on the council, they look at me, and I am accountable to them. And I'm going to be accountable to them. So, Ms. Williams, I, like you, are very emotional when it comes to this, because this is real. This is real. This is not lip service, this is not talking points. This is real. This is about your daily life and how you live. The fact that your daughter is home, and you got two men that you don't even know wanna come in to the house to do whatever, and if they don't, if you don't let them in, what happens? You get fined. I'm gonna leave it at that, Council President. Excuse me for my diatribe, but I think it was really called for. And once again, thank the Summit Housing Authority residents for coming in, and I will not let this, this matter sit. I have a plan. The council president knows my plan, shared it with our city solicitor. I think it's time for action. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Yeah, thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, Council President. Ms. Williams, would it be okay if I read your statement, the rest of your statement? I'd be happy to. I know you're probably not okay, is that okay?
That's okay.
If you wanna bring it up, I'll read it for you. So, I'm gonna read the rest of Ms. Williams' statement. So, I also think this is important for the public to hear. I was speaking with many residents. I get calls all the time. It's been for years. It's been the most frustrating part of this job, watching these individuals suffer. I've called Congressman Kane's office several times as well to engage them. These are Ms. Williams' words. Sorry, I don't know where you came off. "There are a lot of children and single moms here. I feel I should be a female president for safety reasons every time outside source comes. When I need my tub re-tiled again, a stranger comes knocking on my door, I didn't know he was coming. There was no staff with him at that time. He did not make me feel comfortable. My daughter was home, and I turned him away. I spoke to housing about it. No response, except to say a different worker from the same company would be out again. I denied the work. The transportation to the grocery stores from the senior building used to be eligible for seniors and disabled persons, as well as the classes in the senior building. Why are they no longer accessible for disabled tenants? There is no sense of help coming from the S H A staff every time you come to them with a comment, not a complaint. Someone shuts you down derogatorily. It's like a smack in the face, and then you're scared of the repercussions. We used to have meeting times at 7:00 PM. However, Jacqueline and them are inconvenient, so they changed it. If no one comes to the meetings because of Jacqueline, Jackie, and Michelle's verbal attitude. When we are in a meeting with an important person, council member, fire department, as they can see, no one attends, and housing keeps up a smile and says everything is perfect, roses and daisies, but it's not. It's just three, three people who are scared to speak up. They're scared of what housing will do. Every time I go to a board meeting, you get to say things, but Nancy loves to cut me off, as well as others, and no one from housing ever gets back to us with answers. What about grants for graduating seniors? Also, maybe a raffle or some type of discount passes for our kids to go to the Aquatic Center in the summer? That's a great idea. Attend maybe a week or two of summer camp at the Connection or the Y. That's another great idea, Ms. Williams. We'll put you on the committee. The events you throw, no one comes but the committee and the housing staff. We put out flyers in all three S H A sites and asked three simple questions. How satisfied are you with S H A staff? How satisfied are you with the grounds and maintenance? And how satisfied are you with the conditions of your apartment? An overwhelming sixty responses. I apologize. I think you read some of this. They should say some, they should say something about our office and maintenance staff. I think that might be it. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Coming. I think that, I think that's about it. I think I got the gist of it, right? But I, I, these are not my words, but I will say that I receive several calls a month. And I would, I would say that, Matt, we should probably...
Can I just say one more thing? They took our water hose and our charcoal grills, and we had to call the fire department and tell them legally we have to be ten feet away on Weaver Street. We have to get a grill to do grills. And in summertime, we can't go to the pool. We don't have eligibility. So, we allow a little things like that in the community. My daughter and myself for seventeen years have been with Shep, Summer Warneards, Junior League, the Library, St. Teresa's. We volunteer our services for seventeen years in Summit. We are part of the community. But when we come home, we're scared and don't feel like we should have to feel this way. I'm glad she'll be going to college in for a year, a year from now, but I'm still gonna be at Summit Night, and would like this to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Well, thanks for letting me read that, and, and thank you for, all of you for coming. It's really important, and that's, that's why we do what we do. So, I hope the community and the council members, again, these days are over, and things are gonna change. I also wanted to mention, I believe, Rosie, the funeral for Jack Cooper is on Saturday? Wonderful member of our community, Jack Cooper, Millie Cooper's husband, passed away. You may have mentioned at the last meeting, I wasn't here. But what a wonderful man, and I hope that everybody can come out and celebrate Jack's legacy on Saturday. I think that was it. The only other thing I want to mention is we're getting that grant playground equipment from Bristol Myers Squibb soon, so I'm hoping that that comes in September or October. I think that, I think that's all. That's enough for today.
Council President?
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Boyer?
Councilwoman Hamlet, can you, can you just talk about the unhoused, the homeless real quick? Because you were so instrumental in that. And Leah came in here and said, "We went from fifty-five to sixty down to two." Can you just, can you just give us your thoughts on that? I mean, 'cause you were, I mean, this was, you and the mayor, this was your, your, your brainchild here, and it was, this is absolutely amazing what y'all done.
Do you want me to brag for you and stuff? Sure.
I can speak to that, 'cause Delia's too humble to say what she did. Delia, talk about rolling up your sleeves and, and being out there on the street and talking to individuals and trying to identify what their needs were to get out of the situation they were in. She did, she did that. She's been doing it since before the homelessness task force even existed. And she worked really closely with Leah and with Bridges and with Brideway, Shep, all of the, all of the service organizations in town that came together for that task force. Delia was like the glue that stuck everybody together. Delia was recognized and invited to go to California to speak at a national conference regarding homelessness. And, and she is somebody that I look to as a role model for how to address these, these issues. And so, we owe her also a huge, huge thank you for really making, making the, the task force as effective as it was and has been.
Thank you, Delia.
Thank you so, thank you so much, and thanks to Mike Callahan at DCA, true mentor. Can't thank Mike Callahan enough for, for his mentorship and, and teaching us how to do it. So, thank you so much for your kind words.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Yes, Councilman Palowski?
So, I've saved up a whole bunch of things to say. I hope everybody had a great summer. The first is, we talked about bike safety earlier in this meeting. It's been a popular topic at these meetings, and I just want to let everybody know that, well, we've talked about this at other meetings as well, but David Guida is putting together a bike safety assembly that will go to every grade in all of our public schools, and they'll do that every year. So, while this year's seniors may only get one year of it, our first graders are gonna get twelve by the time they matriculate through the system, and we think that'll, that'll work well towards helping things get better. Dog parks. Anybody go into the dog park? I'm there just about every day, and I've been talking to the residents. First, we had a pop-up dog park at Memorial Field, and about a month later, we moved it over to Maybe. We were trying out both locations, and I want to thank everybody who provided their feedback. There's a QR code on the fence there. You can tell people what you think of it. But I've been asking everybody, and, you know, some people want it in one location, some folks want it in another location. Everybody demands that it, we maintain the grass. Some of the pros of the Memorial Field location were that there was always parking, because there's a parking lot there for the tennis courts and the basketball courts that folks can use, even on a school day. The pros of the Maybe location were that it's more central to town, you can get a cup of coffee and walk over to the dog park, and that it has shade. So, one of the issues that we've been seeing is that the grass can't take it. And in my many conversations with the residents who I talked to about this, one gentleman moved here recently from Boston. He said he lived in Brookline, and they close their park every, every, so often, you know, for a few months of the year to let the grass rest. You may have remembered crop rotation when you were a kid, learning, learning about that when that innovation came about in farming, and I think the same will hold true here. So, we've also been talking about cost. Folks may not realize that there's a dog park down at the dump. I don't think it was the greatest location, but that dog park, which is essentially a fence and a bunch of woodchips that we got for free from the dump, costs fifty thousand dollars. Now, I don't know if that's because we have to use government vendors and, you know, union workers or whatever. That sounded like a lot to me. It's probably only more today. So, that's the one, the one caveat I gave everybody. We're gonna try to make at least one of these dog parks permanent as soon as possible, but there's gonna be a cost factor, and we're gonna have to see if we have the money. A number of residents said they would start GoFundMe pages. I said, "Go right ahead and do that. That would be great." In terms of the feedback I've gotten, it really is like a fifty-fifty split as to where they'd like to have the dog park. And I was actually spending a lot of time with former council president Lisa Allen's husband, Pat, who had a wonderful idea, that if you, a lot of people who have pools have these anchors buried in the ground where you put a pole, and you can put up what's a permanent fence essentially and move it. So, one of the ideas that we're toying with on CPPS is to put those anchors in at both locations. In the summer, when we need shade, we can have the dog park over at Maybe, and when it cools off a little bit and that needs to rest a little bit, we can move it up to Memorial. And then, maybe someday, we'll have enough money for another set of fencing. We could put another set of anchors on the Village Green on the other side of Elma Street, and we can move that one back and forth. And the same thing up at Memorial, back and forth on each side of Larned. So, I've learned a lot in this process, and, and in particular, that Summit is a dog town. So, that's just an update on that. If anybody has enjoyed the dog park, has a preference, and they haven't yet given their feedback, like I said, you can get that QR code. You could probably find it on the city website someplace as well. So, let us know what you think. When it comes time to make a decision, we'll have to do that, but the more feedback, the better. The second thing I want to talk about, or the third thing I want to talk about, is affordable housing. And I, I think I've said, may have said this before at a meeting, but Summit naturally embodies the kind of a city that the Mount Laurel Doctrine and fair share housing seek to create all across New Jersey. We have the Summit Housing Authority, which has one hundred and ninety-five units of low-income housing. Overlook Hospital, many people don't know, have ninety-one units of affordable housing. Now, we're not allowed to count those towards something called unmet need, and that's the starting point for any analysis as to how much a particular municipality's affordable housing obligation will be. Our unmet need is three hundred and forty-five. Now, why are we not allowed to count these towards our unmet need? The reason is because they're not affirmatively marketed. We reserve our Summit Housing Authority units for residents, and this is particularly important for the Vito Gallo Building, which houses our seniors, many of whom get priced out of their homes as taxes continue to increase. And Overlook does not affirmatively market, because they have to, that's housing for all the good people who work at the hospital and take care of us and all the people in the surrounding towns. So, if we were allowed to count these towards our unmet need, our number would be fifty-nine, which, when you account for the vacant land adjustment, our obligation would be zero year in and year out. And you see how much time we spend on affordable housing and, and Broad Street West and all the problems that came with that. That's not to say that we don't, that we can't facilitate more... Oh, let me take a step back. Also, what's that? Yes, we could fix them up. Summit's thirty percent minority. Compare that with Chatham, which is just eleven. Summit has children, fifteen percent of our students have free or reduced lunches. Chatham has one. So, if you want to compare a nearby town, and you can see, right? Mount Laurel wants to give opportunities for people who can't afford to live in a particular town to live in that particular town. And we've been doing it for over half a century. I'm working with our Assemblywoman, Michelle Matsakoudis, on some legislation that would maybe modify the Fair Share Act to count housing like Section Eight low-income housing towards our numbers, and also to count Overlook in particular. When you look at the fact that, I mean, how much money does the city spend because we have a hospital here? We're taking care of all of our surrounding towns, the extra traffic that comes with it, ambulances, everything else that goes with that. I think that a municipality like Summit, that has been doing the right thing forever, should get... should get a little bit of extra consideration when it comes to calculating these numbers. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't do, that wouldn't mean that we can't do, that we can't facilitate more affordable housing if we want to. Now, why do I say facilitate? There's no requirement for a municipality to donate land in order to achieve affordable housing, and there's no requirement by law that a city use taxpayer dollars to pay for it. The way it works is, we facilitate. A builder buys a piece of property. They have an idea for a development, and they agree to make a certain percentage of it affordable in exchange for our facilitating them in doing that by relaxing zoning. So, when I tell people the story that I just told you, folks, they scratch their heads. They say, "How can that be?" And so, I'm going to tell you how that can be. It's because a very zealous advocacy group called Fair Share Housing, that's incredibly well-funded by an affordable housing industrial complex, namely builders, who are more focused on maximizing their profits at the expense of our home rule, our ability to control our own destiny, has incredible tremendous influence in Trenton. So, I would encourage you, if you don't like the way things have shaken out here with our affordable housing laws, that you make your voice heard at the, in Trenton. Call your state legislatures. Tell them what you'd like to see happen. Tell them about the improvements that you want to need, that you'd like to see, and maybe we can make some more progress in that regard. I look forward to reading your memo, Mr. Anonymous.
Please do. I have another one here.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a copy before I go. Also, somebody pointed out to me that our council rules, which are adopted by ordinance, are ambiguous as to when our council meetings will be scheduled. They say that we're going to have council meetings the first and second Tuesday of every month, and then later in the document, it says, "or as set forth in the published schedule." But not everybody would always be able to get that far. So, August in particular is an issue, because if people want to come to a council meeting in August, they assume it's going to be on the second and, first and third Tuesdays, and there's no meeting. So, we're going to make front and center. We're not going to do it this now, immediately, because August is over. But before we adopt the new council rules next year, I'm going to work towards making that clear, that we are, that we have a hiatus and a recess in August, and also try to put more front and center the fact that the council meetings are subject to adjustment like tonight. It's Wednesday, and because of Labor Day, we move it a day. So, we'll make all that clear so that somebody who only has the time to glance at our rules and wants to come to a meeting knows what they can do to come to that meeting. Finally, it was brought to my attention that the Summit Municipal Democrat Committee, or SMDC, recently published an inflammatory video containing a false narrative that the Together for Summit team is not summit-centric. Most people realize nothing could be further from the truth, and the truth is that this council majority is myopically focused on improving this city. I think you've seen some of that here tonight. And I would ask everyone, ask yourself, is this city better off today than it was in the years leading up to 2023? Crime is down, thanks to the Resident Protection Ordinance and the addition of four new sworn officers, and I thank Jamelle Boyer for his driving that effort. As you heard before, our homeless are housed, and we're at functional zero, thanks to the tireless efforts of the mayor's task force on homelessness, on which Delia Hamlet has proven to be a relentless advocate, and that is not a joke to ask any of the other folks that are involved in it. We closed out our affordable housing round three obligations with a surplus of units, and we did it without having to build the Broad Street West monstrosity that the SMDC-led council repeatedly gaslighted residents Summit could not accomplish without building that ill-conceived container ship and without cramming two units on the postage stamp-sized property on Ashwood Court Iminad, preserving one of the few green pieces, one of the few pieces of green space left in the city. Even today, Councilwoman Toth, not today, even recently, Councilwoman Toth stated from the dais that Summit should amend its round four plan to add units. I'm sorry, Claire, but I found your contention irresponsible and surprising. We rebuffed the at-home Summit proposed all affordable and exclusionary housing development, which would have had the city donate property valued at $3 to $8 million, depleted Summit's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which, by the way, allows us to add inclusionary affordable housing, like the 15-unit renovation of the United Methodist Church's former school, and other, and another four units for special needs housing, with our house and special needs housing is among the most in demand. It also would have put the city on the hook for any overages of the cost of that development, and there surely would have been. We've added crosswalks and beacons to protect our pedestrians. We're adding sidewalks, and but for state NJDOT constraints, might have done so, state and NJDOT constraints, we may have done so already. Quality of life citations, as Leah Griffith mentioned earlier, are up. These would include open container violations, public urination infractions, and prohibited panhandling. Traffic stops and tickets are up, and we will continue to hold speeders accountable until they slow down. We are renovating our parks and athletic fields. Just, we've recently power washed the bleachers at Tatlock, the Cedar Bridge at Cornog Fieldhouse. DPW has started to power wash the Larned Bridge, the concrete bridge, which is a beautiful bridge. If you've ever looked at it, you can go check it out. I believe they're going to finish that on Friday. And we expect to also power wash the railroad bridge outside of City Hall. And you probably didn't notice tonight when you walked in, because it was dark, but if you want to come by in the daylight, we already did the courtyard and benches at City Hall. We're also renovating our athletic fields, which has already included aerating and fertilizing all grass Summit athletic fields. And if you don't believe me, just take a look at the baseball fields at the middle school and the newly cinder track, where we added 70 tons of stone, which is maroon to boot. The Maybe and Washington School/Tatlock playgrounds will follow. We're adding two new, and thank you, Councilman Smallwood, for your efforts on the fields. It was instrumental. We're also adding two new professional firefighters to the Summit Fire Department, along with six volunteer firefighters to make the city safer. So, I'd ask everybody, and I'd suggest to everybody that if you honestly answer the question of whether Summit is better off today, if it's a better place to live than it was before, it'll be easy for you to separate the wheat from the shaft, and you will come to the inescapable conclusion that Together for Summit, we are accomplishing great things. To borrow Council Boyer's catchphrase, Councilman Boyer's catchphrase, "We can't stop, and we won't stop." Thank you.
May I just please say that annual notice, I'm sorry, I just need to say this. The annual notice that was put out on December 16 of last year that dictated the meeting scheduled time, which was in conflict with the ordinance and stuff, didn't have to support in publications.
Mr. Anonymous, no one can hear you. I would suggest, I want to hear your comments. Can you just approach the dais after the meeting to tell him directly? No one can hear you anyways on the thing. We want to hear it. Just come and mention it.
You let another woman finish.
I know.
This is why three minutes is not enough.
Any other comments, please?
That's a good way to go.
Mr. Smallwood, we will get your, we will get your comments.
I want to hear it. It's not productive when no one can hear you at home. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. First, Ms. Williams, thank you very much for coming tonight. And I will admit to you that, for whatever reason, when I wasn't on this dais, coming up to that podium is nerve-wracking, and I really appreciate it that you're here tonight. And our meetings start at 7:30, so I would encourage you to come back and encourage your neighbors to come back, because we will listen to you. So, thank you for coming, and I hopefully will see you at the next, in future meetings, if not the next meeting. To talk a little bit about affordable housing, I, if you remember, I begrudgingly seconded the resolution ID number 12105, because I don't think we should be in this position. We are having to authorize funds for a lawsuit that we shouldn't be in, which ties into Council President's earlier report, where he noted that there were two properties that this council did not put in its affordable housing plan, one that included a 250-unit building and a 300-unit building eight stories tall. We do have an affordable housing obligation that we want to, that we want to meet. There is a huge difference between development and overdevelopment. In my opinion, an additional 250-unit building and an additional 300-unit building is overdevelopment. I am so happy that we actually had the people on, the right people on this dais to approve that affordable housing plan in June, because otherwise, it just simply would have opened us up to more builder's remedy lawsuits. And that was going to be done, but this bothered me. When someone does a good deed, and you're helping people, and you're volunteering your time, I don't care what political party you are. I don't care if you're Republican, if you're independent, if you're a Democrat. I honestly believe that every person on this dais, at its core, is a good person. But what I found, what I found disgusting was the fact that there was clear points of Councilwoman Hamlet's efforts on what she has done, starting from her first year, three years ago, helping veterans, homeless, find a place to live. And yet, there are two council members that didn't stand, but didn't even clap. To me, that's politics over a good deed, over a volunteer who gives their time. That's disgusting to me.
I agree. Absolutely.
That's all I have, Council President.
Party politics.
Thank you. Other comments from council? I'll just end it. I know there's been a lot of comments. You know, I started off the meeting talking about, like, some litigation and such. Traditionally, Labor Day kind of starts what I would call, you know, it's the election season, some would call silly season. I would just ask, you know, there are people in our community who have differences of opinions. They have differences of opinions on lots of different things, on where our money should get spent, on what projects we should or shouldn't do. And, you know, people have a right to express those differences, even with, you know, a lawsuit, if they feel strongly about it. That's our system. They have that right. What I would hope, though, as we get into silly season, deeper into the election season, that people focus on issues rather than attacks. You know, we have enough poisonous politics in Washington, and what I really, really have had, you know, been very sad about, is this trickle-down that everything local now has to be poisonously political. It's sad, and it shouldn't be that way. We can disagree on whether we want to do this or that, or how our taxpayer money should be spent, but these attacks where you associate people from one party or the other, you know, with issues that we have nothing to do with, it's just wrong. And it really, it, you know, we just had a group of people here who have real issues. They, you know, we should try and fix them. I mean, for people who don't know, people refer to the Summit Housing Authority, SHA. This is an independent governing body of the 195 units of housing that we have in Summit. They're independent. They're an appointed board. These appointments last for several years. The council does appoint these people, but they elect their own, or they hire their own people to do this. It's very difficult to change a board. It takes a long time. People have to go off it. So, we, this board has, you know, legacy people on it that clearly residents have issue with. Now, that shouldn't be political. We should be coming up with solutions on how to help these people. And we can disagree on maybe what the best path of that should be, but we shouldn't make it vitriolic. And there's just way, way too much in our town at the local level where we're just trying to do things, and Councilman Palowski listed a whole litany of things, I think, that have been accomplished, which is great. Now, some people may think that we should have done other things. That's great. You can say that. Give your ideas on what should be done differently, where your money should get spent differently, but don't make it personal. And if you disagree, it's not because the other person's nasty or mean, they just disagree with you. That's okay, too. So, please, let's just remember, we are all hilltoppers, and we all want what's best for our town. And when we're going about doing it, I, you know, again, people should have their opinions and be passionate about it, but let's focus on the issues, not the people. And let's have a good next couple of months. So, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we are adjourned.